Tay, do you want to introduce yourselves? Just say your name and your affiliation.
Okay, I'm Tay. I am a student representative.
Thank you. Who do you want to pass it to Tay?
And I will pass it to Andrew Scott.
Cool. Thanks Tay. I'm Andrew Scott. I'm a school board member and I will pass it to Craig.
Thanks Andrew. Hello everybody. Craig Cuellar, Deputy Superintendent for Instruction in School Communities. And going to go ahead and pass that to the square below me, Luis Valentino.
Good afternoon, everyone. Luis Valentino, Chief Academic Officer. And I will pass it on to Marina Creswell.
I've already gone, but I'll go to pass it to Steve Afros.
Thank you for the toss.
Hi, I'm Steve Afros. I'm a Senior Project Manager in OSM over the Kellogg project, but I'm also helping on the Roosevelt Phase Four project. Pass it on to, let's see Travis.
Hi, I'm Travis Paki. I'm a Senior Director in the Office of Technology and I will pass that to Don Wolf.
Good afternoon, everyone. Don Wolf, I am the Chief Technology Officer for the school district. And I think Mary, you have not gone yet.
I have not. Mary Weiner, Manager of Instructional Resource Adoption. And my audio wasn't quite working, so if anybody can volunteer who hasn't introduced themselves, that would be great.
I can volunteer. This is Amy Constam, Director and Member of this committee multitasking. Then I'll join you on camera in a couple of minutes. I will pass it to Nathaniel Shu.
I'm Nathaniel, Student Representative to the Board and current Senior at Jefferson High School. Let's see, Superintendent Guerrero, have you gone?
I have not. Thank you Nathaniel. Good evening, everybody. Wanda Lute Guerrero, Superintendent. Now this is a test. Claire, have you gone?
I see one person that hasn't gone that I don't know. I apologize. Raquel?
Oh, that's me. I'm Rolando Aquilazon. I'm a Project Manager with OSM and working on the Kellogg project as well and the Roosevelt addition. And Emily, I think you have gone.
I'm Emily Corte, Director of Purchasing and Contracting. I think we've got everybody.
I think that's it. I'll give it a moment. Has everybody had a chance to say your name and your affiliation? Kara, is there any public comment tonight?
No.
Okay. I just want to acknowledge the previous meeting minutes were sent out. And I wanted to, for Amy Constam's benefit, just let you know that you'd asked to add the contracting practices and processes, and we've added that to the work plan. So we made that edit and added that to April's agenda. And there was also a request to more frequently share or have discussion regarding educational specification. And we responded to that by adding that in tonight. So I think the first thing in our agenda is that we're going to do a technology scope overview. And Don, is that you?
I almost started talking without unmuting myself. Yes, that is me and Dr. Travis Paki are going to both, we're going to team up on that.
Fantastic.
Now, not normally presenting in these, Roseanne, I'm not sure. Are you somebody else running the presentation or am I sharing?
I'm sorry. I thought you were sharing, but I'm happy to do it for you.
I can totally do that as well.
I gotta let you know, Don, that we love seeing the technology chief struggling with technology. So not struggling, questioning.
Don, I'll let you run it.
Okay, just need to make sure that I, there we go. Can I give it this one? Let me get that. And hit share and then hit present. Nope, I watched that happen so many times that people hit share and not present rather than... So there we are. You all can see everything effectively. Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I will start without that. What we're seeing here is just on this first slide is the overview of, at a very high level, of what the voters approved for us to move forward in a technology bond as part of the 2020 bond effort. So it's $128 million that will be dedicated for technology. I'm going to hand it over for the next couple of slides for Travis to work through some of the details, but the larger buckets are infrastructure and security, the device refresh and replacement for students and for staff, classroom modernization, and then ERP replacement. And then we've got that fund down there at the bottom called Program and Administration, which from the initial work that we've done with all of our estimates with contingency and whatnot, that has grown from the initial plan. We've moved all of the contingency out of the individual budgets and into the Program Administration Fund. And that's also where we'll be trying running our contractors and whatnot through. So Travis?
Hello, everyone. So just kind of wanted to walk through the pieces of these larger pillars of projects. So the first one is infrastructure and security, and it is the largest of the projects. But it's also the most unseen. And there's a laundry list of technical debt that we're really addressing in here. One of the projects that we're doing here is replacing switches in the data center and in our schools. And these are typically solid-state devices that ensure that network traffic reaches its destination inside the building. But because they're solid-state, they really don't have a failure rate or failure mode where they kind of degrade over time. They either work or they don't work. And recently, we've seen a lot of these start to not work. And when they don't work, they take out lots of things connected to them. They take out our wireless infrastructure. They take out our phones in the classrooms. They're pretty severe. So when they go out, we really end up being highly impacted by that. So the last time that these were replaced in volume was 2010. And we want to get through and go through all the switches in the buildings and the switches in our data center. In addition to that, we're replacing the wireless access points that were installed in 2010. These were mounted in the hallways. And since then, there's been a lot of frequency improvements, a lot of bandwidth improvements to them. And there's also been improvements to the standards, the communications protocols that they communicate by. And a big chunk of that was when we did put these in, we kind of had this mindset of having a few carts of machines in the classrooms. And those would be moved from classroom to classroom as those classes had activities that would call upon those devices. And now we're trying to support hundreds of devices with a single one of those access points, and they just simply can't keep up. So we do need to replace those. Those are at the end of their lives. Also past the end of life is our phone handsets. And will we be replacing all of those within the district? That's a fairly large project and few words for a lot of work. We're also installing what's called fiber interconnects. And this will help us to take advantage of redundant fiber connections between each of our schools. So higher bandwidth, much higher reliability. We're also adding new and additional firewalls. So this is going to give us more security capabilities, but also help us deal with the increased bandwidth that we're now using because of all the additional devices on our network. One of the big pieces that this is going to focus on, though, is a security project as well. Now, this is going to focus on our security and privacy posture. And that's going to look at an in-depth assessment of the current state of security for PPS, but also an identification of systems for replacement. And all of that activity is going to culminate in a security dashboard for our technical team members to be able to actively manage security issues and be able to address them. So just recently on this project, we've completed an invitation to bid for the wiring and switches that happened today. And we will be procuring that security assessment very shortly. Moving forward, we have a device refresh and this is the...
Travis, can I ask a quick question, please?
Sure.
Mr. Paki, hi. This is Director Constam. I don't think we've met. Nice to meet you. I have a question about all of those projects under infrastructure and security. Which ones there or how many of those would you say are giving us a significantly improved capacity versus replacement of obsolete and worn-out, you know, former functions? How much of an upgrade really are we getting within this category?
It's difficult to separate some of those out. So when we do something like replace the wireless access point, that is a replacement of a device that is end-of-life and nearing its failure point. But in addition to doing that, it's not replacing it with a like-kind device. We can't even purchase those anymore. So it's actually upgrading with a new device that can, instead of, say, the previous device that was capable of about 120 connections, support about 450.
So from a teacher's eye view or even a kid's eye view within our buildings, they won't just have things that work where there once were things that didn't work? They'll actually have things that work a lot better?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also have a couple of questions. That was one of my questions was that you just asked, Amy. I'm also wondering if when we look at the phone system upgrade and the handsets, are we talking about state-of-the-art telephone systems? And are these replacing just the old, you know, phones that no one's going to know what they look like? The old phones look like that sit on your desk? I was curious about that. I know that's getting a little bit into the weeds, but it was along the same questioning that Director Constam had regarding if we're just replacing things or we actually increasing capacity and bringing our equipment and capability up into the 21st century.
Yeah, that's a great question and kind of a similar answer. So we can't just replace the older systems that we have today and be able to go out to market and buy the same things in a newer model or a current model. We're actually, we are improving that phone system. We are buying a newer model of that system and we are improving the backend systems that support that phone. So because that phone is used for our intercom in the event of an emergency, we are making sure that that is the best that we can possibly buy, the newest that we can possibly buy there.
Thank you. And that was part of my, I was curious if these were phones just to talk on or if there were other systems connected through the phones. And you answered that as well. Thank you. Are there any other questions before we go on? Thank you. Please go ahead.
So one of the next major project that we're working on is device replacement. And kind of a sterile term for something that's got a lot of excitement behind it. So one of the big pieces of this is getting our teacher devices refreshed. So that is a project that was already underway and it will actually be distributing the last few hundred of those tomorrow. So this is a very powerful Chromebook called a Pixelbook. It's one of the most powerful devices out there. It's gotten a lot of really good reception so far. We're also focusing on the purchase of student devices. And there is an invitation to bid now open for Chromebooks and the associated services that go with that. Sorry, let me find my notes here again. After that, we're also going to be focusing on the pre-K through 2 devices. And that work's going to be beginning in the next couple of weeks. And then we're going to move on to admin and support staff that will get to select between a few pre-selected models and then finally to licensed staff. The classroom modernization project is also a very large project. We expect this work to take us through the next few years. And that is installing a wireless access point, not just in the hallway, like we were talking about a few minutes ago for the infrastructure and security project, but actually in the classroom itself. This also includes, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. That was an awkward interjection. Finish your thought and then I have a question.
All right, sure. So that's a wireless access point in the classroom, a mounted projector in the classroom, a teaching workstation, voice amplification and wireless connectivity to access that projector, as well as a projection surface, a projection whiteboard or screen, depends on the environment that we're going to be in. We've already worked through some of the pilot activity in this space. Don will talk about that a little bit later. And we're going to begin the procurement cycles for this work a little later this summer.
One of the things, if you don't mind me interjecting here Travis, that this will also be covering, it fits under part of the infrastructure process when you notice a wireless access point in the classroom and in the teaching spaces, is that 44 of our buildings only have hallway wireless. And so they don't have instructional wireless throughout the building. This will change that environment for the remainder of our buildings. So to this point, it's been our modernized schools and our TechSmart schools that have gotten instructional wireless. This will bridge that gap so that every one of our campuses, when you walk into a building, wherever you go to teach, you will have connectivity for whatever devices you need and whatever your activities will be in that room.
I have a question either for you, Don, or maybe Luis, this is for you. But back to device refreshment and replacement, post-COVID, are we assuming that these are devices that students will have access to take home? They're one-on-one devices or they're devices that will live in the classroom?
I'm going to say at this point, we haven't nailed down the final details on that, but I think we're beyond the point where we can say the device only stays in the school. We want to be able to support anytime, anywhere learning. And that doesn't mean it just happens in the classroom. It would be tough to step back and say, we're going to go do one-to-one, but we're only going to do it partway. There's insurance. There's some other things, some considerations that we have to put in place. But I don't know how we move forward and expecting our students to learn wherever it's relevant for them if they don't have a device with them.
And even when we're having the conversation around hybrid and how in-person, the in-person aspect of it, well, even then, we're looking at how the technology will be used inside of that space. Because we really want to leverage what both students and teachers have learned around the technology and its value. And so we're working with Kevin Crotchet and Don's team to actually integrate the technology into our curriculum for both in-person and virtual.
I have a quick question about, I'm seeing the numbers of devices here. And I'm wondering, just curious, what we do with these devices once they reach the end of their useful life? Are we working with partners like FreeGeek that would take the devices and wipe them clean? And use them as training? Is there an opportunity for career technical education to, you know, to do something similar to what FreeGeek does, which is refurbish and put open source software on?
I will jump into that one Travis.
It's mostly about recycling. Like this is a lot of hardware to recycle.
It is. So currently, one of the ways I'll answer that is anything that we do that we, we call it e-waste, is make sure we work with a responsible partner that does that as environmentally friendly as possible. Part of the pandemic has raised questions, and I've been in communication with FreeGeek on how they can leverage our PPS's inventory of devices that are no longer livable in our environment, in our schools. And we're trying to figure out what that can mean for Chromebooks. Because Chromebooks are not, outside of the Chrome OS, it's not as easily replatformed as an old MacBook Pro or an old Windows machine. It's really easy to get Linux on those. It's a bit more of a different slog. So we're still continuing to have conversations and see where we can land on that. We'll have four or five years to kind of figure that out for this.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions there, on the ERP replacement, so the current system, PeopleSoft, is about 20 years old. And, you know, it was built during a time where the focus and the locus of control for business process change was in IT. And that meant an IT person had to become an expert in the process that they were trying to help evolve. As business evolved over that timeframe, it began to embrace technology more. And newer systems have been written that move that configuration control into the hands of the subject matter experts in groups like finance and HR. So moving that authority makes the business process updates a lot more agile and responsive to needs. What we want to get is one of those systems, either a newer version of what we have or a different system altogether. So this is a large project of business process analysis efforts that will look at our current state, perform a gap analysis. And at the end of that, that'll create an RFP for the systems replacement.
Can you remind us what the estimate is for this piece of the work, the enterprise replacement?
The current budget for this scope of work is $11 million over the course of the four years to get there. It was estimated somewhere in the $36 to $40 million overall to get to a final replacement. But we've broken this up into two elements because of the shortened bond term on this bond.
So what do you get in that first phase?
That's the analysis. That's the business process decomposition and the gap analysis. So basically, where are we now and where do we want to be? And then please tell us what systems support that functionality and map us the process to get from here to there. So what we're looking at right now is a lot of older systems that were built around a lot of PPS customizations. And unfortunately, that means you can't go out to market directly and find a system that's going to support that customization. It's not going to speak very well. So there's a lot of translation effort that's going to have to take place to get from where we are to that newer system.
But we will actually be doing the hard replacement under this bond as well or just the analysis piece?
No, this runs us up, this times, the timing of this will coincide with the last element of this will be the development of that RFP. And that RFP will be ready to be released at the next bond effort so that we can utilize funds from the next bond effort to actually do the replacement process, the procurement of the newer system and the work to make that happen.
So the diagnosis costs $11 million?
That is the...
My question too.
I'm sorry, Don. I didn't...
Yes, it's going to take three to four years of having those experts in-house. And Travis can speak to this a little bit better. He's been through an ERP replacement before. Having them in-house, working with our folks on a daily basis to understand how the business processes are working, how they're set up, documenting those. Travis, you can jump in and clarify where the key points that I'm missing.
One of the bigger aspects that we are missing as an organization is a lot of decision guides. So you get to a fork in the road on creating a business process and you can go left, you can go right. Or, you know, back in the olden day, you would say, or you can customize and do it your own way. And a lot of that in PPS terms wasn't, it wasn't very well documented, but it was also the go-your-own-way. So there's not a whole lot of hard documentation or even industry knowledge that could say why we've got something in the position that it's in. And a lot of this is going to be not just an ERP migration, but also a business transformation. We're going to move to more standard processes. We're going to move to more industry standard functions so that we're not dealing with customization so much. We're not dealing with projects and processes that are causing us to break with norms and require custom code and custom knowledge to be able to understand why this happened.
I just want to kind of continue on this path for a minute because, I mean, I think what you're saying is that what this process is about is really developing the RFP so that we know exactly what we need, not so much what my first understanding was from your description, which is more of an autopsy of what we had. I mean, I would like to think that we know that what we have is insufficient and obsolete. So we don't want to spend a lot of time and money on doing that autopsy. I mean, I'm just trying to have a little bit of a deeper understanding because an $11 million investment without getting to the point of any functional improvement is a little tough to swallow.
And it's not so much an autopsy as it is an analysis. So the current system isn't dead. The current system is operating and it is operating our business. It is just operating our business with a lot of maintenance and support required. It's also very rigid. When we want to institute a process, we're looking at, you know, a couple of hundred thousand dollars to license the module. And then we're looking at six to nine months' worth of work and $500,000 worth of contract labor just to do something new. Versus on one of the more modern platforms, you can just start paying an extra $2 per license per month in order to start using it and it's up and running. So this is not just going to put us in a position where we can better consume those future services, but we also need to understand what we're doing in the current system so that we can move them to that new service.
Because realistically, it will be another like six years until we see implementation of any new platform?
I would say, once we have completed that RFP process at the end of this, we will be purchasing and starting that new platform immediately. Will we be cut over in six years? That's probably, that would probably be the extreme end of where this project goes.
May I, I've got some additional questions too that I believe could be answered offline and in the interest of time and maintaining my reputation for keeping these meetings on time may suggest that we move on to the next topic or for you to finish, Mr. Paki. I'm sorry not to cut you off.
That's quite all right. I was done with this slide. Don, if you would mind going to the next one?
Thank you.
Thank you. So one of the pieces here we're looking at is our bond project team. So from the Office of Technology, we have Don Wolf, our CTO. We have myself. And we have Mark Lancaster, our Manager of Networks and Telecom. From the OSM side, we have Eric Nays and he's functioning as our liaison for our technology projects. From NIS, we have a couple of project managers there and they are a contracted group that focuses on large-scale, low-voltage work in public sector environments. Kind of a rare find to begin with, but they're also extraordinarily good at what they do. Jennifer Clark has joined us for some of our device deployments. And she has previous education technology experience as an account manager with both Apple and CTL, with a lot of experience on large-scale deployments like this. Also, we're going to be adding additional project managers and technical staff as these projects continue to ramp up. And we should be seeing some of those within the next month or two. And we meet weekly with Otis, NIS, OSM and FAM to plan these projects and go over our progress on them.
So switching back to here, why is this investment needed? We have the PPS Vision document and that document contains nine critical elements that create the graduate portrait of a student attending Portland Public Schools. One-third of those graduate portrait elements specifically identify technology as a key component of that portrait. So, and there are other underlying assumptions all across the other, the remaining six elements within the graduate portrait that says technology is going to be important for their future, for their vision, for what they do once they leave Portland Public Schools. We live in a digital world and when our students leave PPS as graduates, they will need to have the skills and the understanding of what it means to be successful in their lives beyond Portland Public Schools. So in order to make those skills and opportunities accessible to our students, we need to have a robust, resilient technical foundation from which to support students' opportunities for creation and communication, exploration, growth and learning, and about functioning and thriving in a digital world. Additionally, the world of curriculum and content has changed dramatically since any of us have attended a K-12 school. Resources for teaching and learning, as I'm certain you're going to hear from Dr. Valentino here shortly, are very much digitally offered. If not exclusively, then key components are only available as digital resources. And if we're going to have our teaching and learning based on a curriculum that is delivered in digital platforms, we've got to have robust systems and devices available for our students and our teachers to be able to access that content. Finally, I would argue, and I'm excited about all of this work incredibly, is that PPS is a really large enterprise. And a requirement for running a large enterprise in the 21st century is having reliable computers, networks and enterprise applications and connectivity to... and enterprise applications to and connectivity to complete the work required to successfully run a K-12 school district. Our primary and overarching goal of this bond effort is the development of a modernized, reliable, resilient and secure infrastructure that meets the needs of both the classroom and of the business processes required to be a highly functional operation. So to do this, our technical, technical infrastructure requires not just the care and maintenance that our Otis staff puts in on a daily basis, but it requires continual investments in the hardware and the software to remain updated, stay reliable, secure and and functional. So it is one of the areas that hasn't had a a constant minding of the store to make sure that we've remained current and up to date so that we can some, we can support the the educational opportunities we want to for our students. To kick this off, as we're moving through these and and getting ready to to move through all those four big buckets of work, we're starting a pilot process right now at two of our elementary or two of our schools. One's a K eight and one's elementary at Caesar Chavez and Voice Elliot Humboldt. These two schools are are going to pilot the full classroom modernization and at the same time, the full infrastructure improvements. We want to do that in a pilot structure. We picked these two schools because of their challenging construction in their buildings. They're both older buildings. There's potential for asbestos. There's potential for hard ways to get wiring through there so that we can use them as lessons learned. So how do we, how do we deploy this in 75 plus other schools as we move forward through this construction effort? We wanted to make sure that we we could get all of our keys and all of our keys crossed and all of our eyes dotted so that we know what we're walking into so that we can be much more efficient. And we want to make sure that we can structure this in our upcoming schedule in a way that we touch a school once with these these invasive processes. We don't want to have to interrupt and disrupt a school process more than one time with these. So the full schedule, as we roll those out, which were were based on how this pilot project goes, we will develop then a a full schedule that will be in alignment with our theory of action in Portland Public Schools. We will, we we know we have a couple of other obligations. George Middle School and Lane Middle School are recent Verizon Innovative Learning Schools additions. So they have a need to have that full instructional wireless in place when they start school in the fall. So while those both of both of those schools align to our theory of action, they also have a need that we know that, once we're ready to go and apply our lessons learned, they will be the next two schools that will be at the front of the line as we move forward. Where our intent is to have by the summer kind of a more full schedule. So we know which schools we're hitting approximately at what time that we can present and and provide updates on.
So going back to each of the categories that that Travis went through, how disruptive are these activities? Like, are these things that could be managed when schools in session and sequenced when schools in session?
They are, they they can be pretty invasive if a school doesn't have the wireline. When we talk about replacing the fiber interconnects in a building, that's getting into the ceilings or that's actually adding additional conduit conduit along the walls or along the ceilings, depending on the construction of the building. It can be, we will work to look at after hours, we're going to have to complete. There's no way we can, we can finalize both of these projects in the four to five years if we're only focused on summer work. So finding ways that we can work after hours or in some of the schools that in conjunction with facilities and maintenance where they have construction efforts, where parts of the building are unavailable, we'll try and piggyback on on that. But what we don't want to do is interrupt the classroom processes. So wanted to make you aware of some upcoming investments that the board will start be seeing around the bond. This first one has a big asterisk on it. It's, so these are some of the immediate spans that we're going to see starting to come out of the technology budget around the bond. Didn't want to catch anybody off surprise. We have a couple under the infrastructure security. Travis had mentioned earlier that we've got a, we just closed the invitation to bid today. We should know tomorrow where that award is going to go. So that $17 million represents the worst possible scenario. That's based on consumer resale pricing. And it should be much less than that. Our security assessment is going to kick off pretty soon. We've already purchased some teacher laptops that are, the finalized order will be this week. We've just ordered some student devices that will help. These will ultimately end up supporting our PK two efforts as well as some of our assistive technology efforts. But we also need to have them, we needed to get them moving quicker than than the larger order for the one to one effort. So we ordered them now so we could help support the hybrid reentry process. And as we go back to to teaching, we we know we're going to need some additional devices. We have some classroom teaching cameras to help support some of those efforts and we'll be utilizing those throughout the district as we continue to make use of things like Google Meets and Zoom throughout the district so we can limit the travel. And then we're getting ready to launch late winter, early spring, some of the business readiness assessments, which is probably $75,000 investment. So just wanted to make people aware as as things are starting to come in, what where where the money is going.
Note, note to David Roy in particular, we should be mindful how we refer to these security investments because we also have significant investments in physical security improvements on the modernization side of the bond. So we should be really clear with the public, what we're getting where.
Yeah, we we do want to make a clear distinction between the the physical security and the cybersecurity efforts. I think we've talked about all of these. If there's questions there, please let me know, but these projects are currently moving. And then wanted to give you an overall timeline. It's it's tough to give a a complete timeline right now. I will call out, I want to call out the infrastructure and security, the classroom modernization and the ERP replacement. Those are all going to be extent of this lifetime, they of this bond. They're potentially going to end in the fall of 25. That's that's our expected timeline right now. The only one that's kind of a quick hit will be the device refresh and replacement efforts for our students and our staff. We're anticipating having that one closed out about this time next year. That's all the official slides we have. If there's other questions that we haven't addressed, would love to take those.
Yeah, and my apologies, I had to step away for a call for a few minutes. So I, if you already said this, I apologize. On the the last side, you talked about a kickoff with Multnomah County on the ERP replacement planning. Were we doing something jointly with Multnomah County on that project?
What I referenced there is we had Multnomah County come in. They've been gracious partners and they shared their journey through their adoption and how they went about staging their their inception, their their released RFP and then their cut over to process. They came and spoke to the technology group, the finance group, the HR group. We we had about 15 people. We met with them Tuesday just to hear their journey, just to kind of set the stage and set some some guidelines for what this work could look like and does look like and to use them as a resource. So we did that kickoff with them just out of, because they're great partners.
Great. And then on the, and I'm sorry, I should know this, and I'm sure you said it earlier in the presentation, that the funding in the bond, is it just for the ERP replacement planning? Or is there total funding in the bond for for the planning and replacement of the year?
It's just for the, it's just for the planning and get to and and having a fully vetted RFP created.
Okay. Okay, but you would not have implementation funding until a future bond or some other decision. Okay. Getting back to Amy's point that I caught sort of the the tail end of her question. I do think it's going to be important to talk about what we're getting from that. And and I know, I know the systems planning and business planning process around these is significant. And and I also know it can be beneficial, right? As you do that business process mapping, you actually identify a lot of things that you can fix even without a new ERP. But I I think as we move forward, we're going to really want to know that. And I may ask, I I've done, I'm probably going to ask for a separate, a little bit of separate time to dive into this a little more.
Absolutely.
I'd be happy to share my city of Portland ERP experience, which is not a model you want to follow.
Those are, those are good lessons to learn too.
Thanks.
Does anyone have any other questions before we move on? I don't see any hands raised.
I guess I think I have one question, which is probably to the superintendent and Dr. Valentino and Don Wolf. Are we, are we envisioning changing anything, especially, well, anything in this whole bucket? Based on our experience in remote learning? I mean, our our bond language gives us a fair bit of leeway in terms of defining what we're going to do with these projects. Is there anything that we realized like, wow, we really kind of were, we're almost on the wrong path there and we're going to do it a little differently?
I'll start, but a couple of the obvious places, you heard Don refer to, you know, more capable devices for for educators and certainly a refresh for for our students. Given, you know, we have tens of thousands of our devices out already in the homes and hands of our students. And then you're going to hear from Dr. Valentino, how bond monies will be put to use. But certainly the implication for our learning platform and digital resources, you're going to hear some of that. So there's a good question and a little bit of preview about how these two areas intersect. But but Don or Luis, do you want to add more?
So certainly, one of the things that you will, that you will hear from Mary and from me is how we are reimagining the experience for student learning and the fact that what we've learned is student access can be 24/7 on any device, not just in the classroom or the book they take home. And so part of how our curriculum adoption will play out, as you will hear, really is about being mindful to that fact, about being more student centered and providing students more access to content as they navigate their their learning back in the classroom, that it doesn't end there, that it goes beyond the walls of that. That is, that is one. The other one is just the what what the teacher has learned, right? And how they approach the learning so that there is an opportunity to use the technology in the classroom a little bit differently than they had in the past. Because prior to March of last year, we were maybe a decade away from what we thought we were going to accomplish. And all of a sudden, the velocities took us to places where we didn't think we were going to be able to get to, and we have. And so that's exciting. So how do we leverage that? So your question really is asking us, how are we thinking differently about how teaching and learning is going to happen into the future? And it is. And it, one of the elements is how we procure resources that allow us to do that. And you'll hear a little bit more about that this evening.
And and thank you. And that might be a great segue. If there are no other questions, I'll allow a few seconds if anybody has a few, but a nice segue, Dr. Valentino, to the topic that you'll be presenting on, which is the curriculum scope overview.
So, Don, did you want to add anything or should I just go ahead?
The only piece I was going to add is the the things that we're doing functionally within this bond for technology are are foundational to get us to a point where we can have a robust network on our sites. The one, the one thing that we do have our eye on that we know was an issue was how do we, how do we extend the wireless capabilities outside of our buildings? So as we can do that, that that is part of our planning process to see what we can do to to extend beyond our walls. But not, not a lot of other functional changes that we need here, other than we know we need more classrooms that have access.
So Luis, maybe while you're pulling up your deck, maybe I can, maybe I can put in student friendly terms, an example. Clearly, this pandemic and this opportunity with bond investments has accelerated our ability to be more one to one in our use of technology. So, you know, somebody asked a curious question the other day. Since all of our students now have devices and all of our teachers have gotten really good at remote or distance learning, what happens in the future when there's a snow day? Do we need to cancel school or do we just switch our our delivery to distance learning now that we know how to do that? So it's these kinds of questions now that we get to ponder. How do we exploit this really important resource that our students will use? Not just after this pandemic is over as just another means to access their the the learners.
I think that's fabulous. I also, you know, it's an important tool to have in our tool belt for resilience. I mean, and and that requires, you know, maybe these conversations that are happening around municipal broadband and who is still left out of the, you know, the digital divide, who who that's impacting still. There are kids that that probably don't, still don't have internet access anywhere near their homes. So great that this is happening and I think I'm going to move us on if that's okay.
Director, I just used that as an example. I don't want to be known as the snow day bridge.
We also are expecting an earthquake though. So I think that, you know, resilience in the face of any natural or manmade disaster is a way to deliver education to our students is is great. It's a good investment. Moving ahead, I'd like to introduce or invite you to go ahead, I'm Dr. Valentino.
Thank you, Ms. DePass. Mary, can you, can you share the screen, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. So as you can imagine, we are excited and elated for the opportunity being afforded to us with the bond resources to more effectively address issues of equitable access to learning for all of our students, but in particular, our BIPOC student populations. The use of the bond dollars for curriculum is unique to PPS and it's certainly, its benefits are certainly not lost on us. In our brief presentation today, Mary Weiner, who is our our manager for the the bond project, and I will provide you with some context on our curriculum adoptions, describing our process and sharing the scope and sequence within our adoption cycle, including our timelines and our budget distributions over the next few years. The bond dollars have provided us incredible leverage to offer comprehensive, rigorous and supportive curriculums across all subject areas, PK 12, within the next three to four years. And as you will hear from Mary, this is incredible and remarkable because we're talking about being able to fund across more than 12 subject areas and some that have not been adopted in over 20 years. And so what that means, looking at curriculum differently and in the more comprehensive way to serve students, not only in the classroom, but anywhere they are, 24/7 on on any device. And as as you were asking earlier, this is a critical piece of our curriculum adoption process. Next slide, Mary. So the curriculum is a critical factor in our students' academic progress and success. It supports bringing internal coherence and alignment in the implementation of standards based instruction, facilitating the distribution and use of resources to schools and classrooms. And so what you will see is a short narrative describing those points, which are really critical for describing the why curriculum matters in the work that we're trying to do in PPS in creating a transformative environment for teaching and learning. Next slide, Mary. So the curriculum is one of three key elements of our instructional program and is situated alongside teacher practices and student experiences. Combined, these three elements make up what we call the instructional core. This instructional core is nested inside the integrated diagram from our vision plan. And it helps to articulate the transformative curriculum and pedagogy that that all students need to access because it because it becomes the through line to actualizing our graduate portrait. And so as you will see from in this particular slide, on the left, you will see the components of the vision plan that require those those tangible shifts. And that includes how curriculum is incorporated into the teaching and learning experience. And on the right side, that circle really reflects the curriculums in the various components it brings, including digital resources and supplemental materials. So our curriculum is extremely comprehensive and it is designed to work both now in a digital environment and then analog environment. And so in our conversations with our publishers, including some today, we're asking the question of not only, how does it provide access to to our English language learners? Are students with disabilities? Are students in dual language programs? Are African American students, are Asians? So how does it incorporate? How are they themselves thinking about the new environment that we're moving into to lend that support? And so that it also works in a digital place when a student is at home on the weekend, doing some additional work that they have the same kind of access to the material than they do in the classroom. And so Mary will share our our specific process with you as it reflects what what we're what we're talking about right now. Mary?
Dr. V. Thank you so much, Dr. Valentino.
Would you take a moment to introduce Mary a little bit more?
Oh, you're on mute.
So Mary Weiner fell from heaven. She was actually working with Sarah, with Sarah Davis. And so when we started this initiative, one of the things that Marina and Dan recommended was that we had someone who could manage this because it was that we had someone who could manage this because it was a heavy lift. And it was Hannah and I trying to do it. And then Hannah went on maternity leave, so it was Myra, my assistant and I, and we were like overwhelmed. And so Sarah Davis volunteered Mary to work with us. And so Mary was gracious enough to do two jobs for a few months. And then we were given the opportunity to post for this position or to offer this position. And Mary actually just took the lateral. She said, I would love to continue to do this work. So she's not working directly with us and she brings great experience to this work. So we're excited to have her.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Valentino.
Staff before the board. I think it's important to acknowledge the talent in the organization. And Mary has stepped up to really take on what's really going to be a multi-year project, a significant investment for us and making sure our curriculum adoption moves smoothly. Sorry for the interjection.
Thank you. I appreciate it. No, no.
Thank you for asking for that, Superintendent.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for having me tonight to talk about the adoption process. It's really been a heavy lift since I, I actually Hannah and I were two ships passing in the night. I came back from maternity leave the day that she went on maternity leave. So, but it was great to come back to this and I am very excited to work on the adoption process. And so I, I kind of wanted to start out giving you an overview of not only the process, but also what adoption is. And so for us as a district, we are not only going through these adoptions, we're also formalizing an adoption process that hasn't been in place before. And so an adoption process is really the process in which a district engages with curriculum and develops curriculum to be implemented throughout the district. And for us in this adoption process that we're developing, it really includes four cycles, which are define, select, implement, and evaluate. And I'll talk about that in a later slide. But the reasons of why we're going through this adoption process and developing the adoptions is, one, like I said, we haven't had a formalized adoption process. So there's never been a cyclical adoption process that our district has gone through. A lot of it has been on demand of district priorities, funding availability and content needs. And I'll talk a little bit later about how long it's been since we've adopted some of the, the curriculum that we're currently using. Also, it's important as we develop this adoption process to examine everything very clearly through the RESJ lens. And I'll talk about how we're doing that from the moment we start thinking about adoption to, and adoption never really ends. You know, you're always evaluating, you're always implementing. So how we're doing that throughout. Also, a shift in prioritized educational standards and adoption of standards, so common core standards and GSS. A lot of the curriculum that we're currently using is not reflective of those standards. So it, it's involving a lot of teacher adaptation in order to make it function within the classroom, which isn't how it should be. Provide up-to-date and culturally relevant materials. So really, some of our curriculum is from before most of our students were born. So it, it's really important that we have that. And like we talked about earlier, the increased availability of digital resources, which not only means students can access that information everywhere, it's also updated more frequently. And we're able to kind of keep up to date with the curriculum that we're using. Also, increased availability to instructional resources that allow for differentiated, differentiated instruction. So both for, you know, tag students as well as fed students and how teachers can use this to differentiate their instruction within the classroom for their students. And those materials are, are much more readily available than they were a decade ago. So it's important that we include that in the process. Also, availability of authentic and translated materials for our newcomers, our DLI, our ESL students, making sure that we have those as part of our adoption process and are including those in this. So next, I'm going to dive more into kind of this process. Though, like I said, we're, we're, we're coderizing this adoption process. So we're still in, in, in that work right now, but we've really been able to delineate kind of four major buckets. So most of our programs are up here in the left-hand corner, which is the define. So defining is really project scoping, the timeline and budget, creating an adoption committee and the material evaluation and rubric, or material evaluation rubric. So talking about that RESJ lens, and so really it, it's from the moment we're talking about adoption committee. So right now, as, as we're forming this process, we're thinking about how do we have equity in our adoption committee? And we're, we're putting in standards and recommendations about what percentage of schools and teachers you have to have from historically, or from schools with historically underserved students at a certain percentile. We're still working out that percentile. So not equality in making sure that we have every school represented, but really equity in how our schools are represented and that we have a good percentage of those teachers coming from those historically underserved schools with historically underserved population. And so in addition, the material evaluation rubric, which is really something that we use with vendors to evaluate our curriculum from right off the bat. We, we have an evaluation, which is a bias evaluation that our programs and content areas are using when they engage with vendors to screen for bias within that. So really focusing on that from the moment we begin throughout the entire process is, is really important for us.
Mary, can I, can I ask a question here? I think, maybe you buried the lead because what I'm understanding is this is not, this does not sound like a curriculum refreshment, which is sort of what we talked about with a bond proposal saying that our general fund can't sustain the type of investments that we need to make on an annual basis. So we're going to do it in the bond. What you're really talking about is a completely foundational investment in curriculum materials of all sorts and starting from like a zero-sum position in terms of evaluating what our students need. Do I have that right?
Yeah.
Because that's, that's kind of a big deal.
Director Konstant, timeline in a moment that's going to make that point very clear.
Okay, sorry about that.
Well, you know, we're blessed with this funding and we are going to make it work, every single dollar work for our students. And so if we're able to do it, we're going to do it. We want to make sure what we have works the best for our students across the district. So going back to the adoption process, so the selection is really when we work with vendors, we interview vendors, we field test materials with teachers and, and engage the community and parents and students within the process, engage them with the materials. And then that selection process ends up with a vendor selection. And I'll, in the next slide, I'm going to go into how our K through five math adoption is working. So I can talk a little bit more about those details. And then after selection is obviously the implementation, which is the bulk of the work. So we've purchased the materials, which is what the bond can cover. And then we go to the hard, hard work, which is implementing those materials and providing professional development for teachers, ongoing support and making sure that this curriculum is working for our teachers and our students. And the last phase, and I should say the implement phase, I, I, I don't really, I, I might have to rework that. It's because the implement phase really goes for the life of the curriculum. You're always going to have new teachers come on board. You're always going to need to provide extra support. So the implementation phase does not end and then evaluation begins. It really kind of continues through that. And then evaluation, which is key to my heart and key to all of our work, is how do we evaluate and make sure that our curriculum is really, you know, doing our students justice and that it's doing what it's supposed to do and really helping our students advance their education. And so that will be a huge part of our work and we're going to rely a lot upon SPP to help us with this work. But this hasn't traditionally been done in the past and it's, it's sometimes hard to measure. And definitely there's a lag in measuring, you know, curriculum implementation and how it affects students. But that's something that we are going to focus on a lot within this adoption process. So next slide. So again, specifically on K through five math, so they are the furthest along right now. So I wanted to set an example. They've gone through this define process and I put it down for fall/winter 2021. But really they began the process earlier in recruiting for that adoption committee and project scoping and timeline. But they were actually the ones driving the, the, the vendor bias or the curriculum bias evaluation that all of our programs are now going to be using as they evaluate curriculum. They're in this select phase right now. So in the beginning of December, they interviewed four vendors for math curriculum, K through five, and they narrowed that down to two. And those two vendors are now being, or those two curricula are now being implemented through the field test. So subset of teachers is now outside implementing that. And through that, we're doing observations of those teachers in classrooms. And community engagement is going to be shortly happening where we engage the community with that curriculum, engage students, engage parents, engage stakeholders. And so a thorough evaluation, so it's not just being evaluated by teachers. We're, we're putting that out there so we get feedback and input from, from all different parties. And then after that, we'll select a vendor hopefully in the next couple of months and then procure those instructional resources. And again, December is when the bulk of everything happens. That's really the start of the implementation phase where we do lots of professional development with teachers, embedding PD within the school year and just in time support. And again, this is something that's continual throughout the life of the curricula. But, and I'll talk a little bit about the figures and the numbers related to this in the budget slide at the end. But obviously with PD, with all K through five teachers from the district, it is, it is quite a lot of funding that will be needed for those, that professional development for teachers. And then the evaluation phase, obviously continuing with that, making sure that we are, are working through that. And I, I should say that we've also, you know, in that define process, I didn't add the line item. But also what was done beforehand was really looking at the curriculum that we had and evaluating that. So making sure that we're, we're, we're seeing what went wrong. I, I don't, I don't want to say a gap analysis, but, but really evaluating our current curriculum and making sure that those factors go into the curriculum that we choose, whether we like it or not. So this is that, that adoption history slide that we were talking about. And as you can see, it's, it's been a long time since we've adopted. And, and I like to think that 2010 was just yesterday, but really it was a decade ago and a lot has changed in the past decade. And some of our major, major subject areas haven't been adopted in, in 20 plus years. And then health, so I, I put 1995 in for health, but rumor has it, we haven't adopted health curriculum since the AIDS crisis of the early eighties. So obviously completely out of date. And we, like I said, we are so gracious for the voters and, and you as board members for supporting this work through the bond because things like that need to change and we need to have new and updated curriculum for our teachers to use. So this is that adoption chart. For those of you that are quickly counting, there are 14 adoptions actually on this chart. And don't let it scare you too much. So we have spent a lot of time scaffolding this work so that we're not putting too much pressure on teachers and schools. Everything from, you know, when, when the full adoption is going to happen to how we're selecting field test teachers, how we're selecting committee members to make sure that we are not overwhelming. And it's quality over quantity, right? So we're making sure that what we're doing is quality. And then if we have to end up pushing things back because we don't feel like we're ready for full adoptions, we will do that. This is, this is that overall scope. And so K through five, you can see how we've been able to scaffold it. And, and we'll continue to do that and we'll continue to evaluate. We'll continue to listen to our teachers and our students and our schools about this process. But we are so excited that we are able to do this. I'll, you take that photo. And then this is the funding picture. So this, I apologize.
Stand it. Sorry about that.
Oh, no worries. Well, you'll, you'll have it, that picture to keep. So this is the funding picture. So the bond funding, the $53 million is just amazing, amazing. And like I said, in addition to that, there, there are items that we know are not compensable under the bond. And unfortunately, that is a lot of the, the, it's the nature of the bond and it's a lot of our work. So professional development, extended hours for teachers to participate in that professional development, field test materials, supplies, any sort of consumables for students are all things that aren't compensable under the bond that we will need to leverage general funds for, SIA funds for. And so we put together estimates of what that would look like over the next four years. Don't worry, this is about, this is about $18 million for one year. And then you can see in the bottom right corner, the school years and the non-bond funded needed. We've been able to spread it out a bit, but it is a lot of, of funding. But it is so essential to have quality professional development for our teachers. That is really where that turning point is. And so we don't want to sacrifice that because it's too expensive. We want to make sure that the curriculum that we are adopting is effective within the classroom and that starts with the teacher. So that is the picture. And then any questions?
It's great to see that it doesn't seem to have skipped a beat in remote learning, that we're still able to do all of our field testing so that we can keep things on schedule. So thank you all for that.
Are there no other questions?
I think I heard Director Konstant say, no, this is exciting. Those are a few really powerful slides there and a historical, long overdue investment. So I'm glad that we're starting to paint the picture and how things are starting, which will set sort of a pattern of what we'll expect to see across grade levels and content areas. And especially in areas that maybe you don't think of right away. It's not just math and reading, it's social, emotional, it's arts. They, they all have content and curriculum that we want our students to have access to high-quality materials to. So Director DePass, I don't think we've ever done a virtual stadium wave, you know, on the screen.
Will we try it? I'll start. Thank you very much, Mary and Dr. Valentino. My, my only question, it's just a brief one, was around the community engagement aspect of the work and like who the identified stakeholders are. And there've been some community members that have been working on curriculum for years, several decades probably. And just wondering if they were going to be engaged or their student or teachers were going to be engaged, students?
So we're still shaping that out. So yes. And, and a lot of this work is kind of, and the nature of the bond was we're kind of building the plane while we're flying it. So we are working on that. We're making sure that we have all the stakeholders engaged. So, so yes, and I will be sure that I, I get that information. And it's not just me, I should say, we're working with a large team of program administrators and teachers on developing this adoption process. So, so we'll be sure to make sure that all stakeholders are included in that. But I want as much feedback as possible.
Fantastic.
I may regret that later, but.
You might. And it also might end up with a, you're a stronger deliverable in the very end. So thank you very much for this. I'm excited to see what you, you and your team end up with.
So Director DePass, so one of, Director DePass, one of the things that we've done is we've changed the way that the CMEC process works. And primarily because it never really has worked because, and the CMEC process is the state process for how we adopt curriculum. But it was fairly limited and since we are, it didn't, it couldn't stand up to the scrutiny of the work that PPS has been doing. And so we needed to expand on that. So I think, Mary, it would be great to share with our directors how the process has been expanding to the point of it's a larger community of people that is multi-stakeholder, it's cross-functional. Because I think you will, you will see the, the, the thinking that has gone on that will give you a better sense of how we're making decisions about our curriculum, including how we meet with our publishers. And the fact, it's really interesting, the fact that we have $53 million, which, what, they talk to us differently because they take us more seriously. The conversations today with a couple of our publishers in. Uh, we're, the conversations today with a couple of our publishers in, with the math has to do with how are you going to show up to help us with the translation? Because I will tell you, we, we spend a couple of million dollars each year just on the translation. But they're not going to help us with the translation now and pay for, because we haven't done a full adoption. But if we're doing a full adoption, they're going to be more, more amenable to, to working with us in, in taking, taking, uh, carrying some of the load around the, the translation for our resources in, in, in Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, Russian, et cetera. And so it does make a difference. And so the committee is becoming much more thoughtful in how we're going to interact with our publishers and our other partners. So we'll share that information.
Yeah, definitely.
You can have it.
Yeah. And, and even from the start, we have worked on a very comprehensive survey that we're sending to all vendors, no matter what curriculum or materials they are producing that really screens them for, um, what languages they're producing or what languages they're, they're coming out in. So ESL, DLI, Fed, um, SEL, um, TAG, all had influence into this survey that were able to cover all departments or, or, or all departments that this curriculum will touch and all students that this curriculum will touch from the moment we engage a vendor.
Fabulous. And I have, uh, one question too about the languages. So are the languages for the textbooks then translated into our safe harbor languages?
No, that, that's part of the issue now that we don't have that. So we have to pay for our own translations. And so, and that comes out of our general fund allocation. And that's not necessarily helpful. So we're trying to work with them on the number of things so that as they see that we are going to be comprehensive in our purchases, that they will, that they will absorb some of the cost for a number of things, including professional development, so that it's built into the adoption and then we don't have to pay for it out of general fund. So it, it, we have some leverage now that we've never had before. So that, I think that's a nurtured effect of having resources.
Thank you so much for your presentation and, um, it's great to learn something about the system today. We're going to move ahead, um, now to our discussion around the Bond Accountability Committee Charter. And, um, Dan Jung, do you want to kick us off?
Yeah, I will do that. And I'll do, uh, the abbreviated version of this topic because really it's an introduction of the topic. And then we'll be looking at a deliverable at our next meeting. So I think I can go through this pretty quickly. Uh, I was going to put up a, a real short presentation, but I'll skip that too for the sake of time. Uh, we're going to be updating the BAC Charter, uh, to include the twenty twenty bond scope of work, of course. Uh, but it's also an opportunity to make other needed changes, uh, since we're going to be going through the process and adopting an updated charter. Uh, as it stands now, the charter as expected, you know, highlights the roles and responsibilities of the Bond Accountability Committee. Uh, the three primary objectives are really monitoring the bond progress against the voter-approved bond language, uh, providing regular updates on the progress to the board, uh, and providing advice to the board on the, on the whole range of topics that are outlined, uh, in the charter. Uh, at the January, uh, BAC retreat, we discussed, uh, some other potential, uh, I guess I'd say tweaks or improvements to the charter. And really those are around aligning their role with what they do and how they do it. And also strengthening the coordination, the communication between the, the triad relationship we have between the BAC, the Board of Education and staff. So no major overhauls are proposed, uh, or anticipated, at least at this time. Uh, we've got a very preliminary, uh, draft update. Uh, uh, what we want to do is share that with the SIBC members, get any feedback that you might have and then bring back, uh, a draft uh, update at the next committee meeting. So that's really where we are right now. Want to just introduce that and let you know that that's going to be coming. Uh, we can share a copy of the, we'll, we'll share a copy of the draft language changes that we have now. Uh, and the charter is on our website for anyone to go take a look at that. So that's where we are. And Michelle, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything there. I know you've had a chance to take just a quick look.
Yeah, um, I think you summarized it really well. I wanted to add that just for committee members, um, for your benefit that we also, and, and it's somewhat tangential, but have talked about how we'll, um, create a structure for providing input into our agendas going forward. And so we've settled on, um, staff and I meeting shortly after these meetings that we're in today. We'll send out a notice that you'll be able to, um, input. And so we'll have like a structured way, much, much like the way our board agenda settings. Um, meetings are scheduled at a regular cadence. And, um, so you'll have opportunity to, um, be apprised of any materials or anything that you need, um, to provide, um, provide input to. Does that make sense? So we're trying to make it easier for people to know when to expect, when they can, um, bring up a topic, when they can add it to the, the following agenda, and when it'll be too late and it'll have to be that your, your issue will have to be moved to a later meeting, if that makes sense. Trying to streamline processes. Um, and that's all I have to add. Any comments on that? Concerns? Yes, we are adding another meeting. It's going to be a thirty-minute meeting. Um, and we're going to move now to the Roosevelt Phase for Procurement. And you should have all received the attachments that came, um, the member to the school board dated, um, December eighteenth, twenty twenty, the staff report to the board that's dated June, I believe, um, June of twenty twenty. And then the draft findings, um, for Roosevelt Phase for May of twenty twenty. And I'm not sure who's kicking this off. Is this?
Oh, I'll take that one as well. Um, yeah.
Hey, Dan.
Yes.
This is Amy. I just want to say before you get started, since I requested this item, um, you know, I, I, for me, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time going back over this particular recruitment process, but my hope with this conversation was that we use this experience to look more generally at our contracting processes, understand when we're doing, um, low bid, uh, contracts, when we're doing CMGC, um, and just look at some of the, the issues and questions that arose um, in the context of this particular contract to see, you know, are there some places where we're not quite aligned with best practices, where we have made a change or we're considering making a change? Um, you know, rather than, at least for me, just completely going back over these decisions that were made because I'm sufficiently convinced that we didn't violate any of our own existing policies, but I do still have remaining questions about whether or not we need to make any changes.
So, um, you're, um, Director Konstam, you're asking for, um, not to necessarily regurgitate the procurement process, contracting process on Roosevelt, but rather moving forward, um, understanding how we determine which, um, bidding process to use? Clarification on whether we're using best practices? Right sizing the bidding procurement process to the project?
Yeah. And some of that is included in the staff memo, um, kind of in direct response to some of the questions that were raised. Um, so I'm just saying for me, that's, that's the broader conversation that I think is useful here. And I think that the heart of it is, um, you know, what is the level of, of subjectivity or how much room for a perception of subjectivity is there in a bidding process like this? Sorry, sorry to interrupt, Dan, as you were getting going, but as far as I'm concerned, we don't need to like do a full rehash of this particular contract.
Yeah, that's not a problem at all. And I think, you know, at a, you know, the high level to respond to, uh, some of the, the questions about alternative procurement, I think the Roosevelt, even though it's a smaller project, uh, is similar in a lot of ways to CMGCs. It's just it's scaled up. Uh, what Roosevelt was, was a RFP process, which is considered alternative procurement for construction services by our contracting rules and by the state ORS that defines that. CMGC is the exact same. It's also an alternative procurement. All alternative procurements are approved by the board prior to us advertising and procuring those services. They, the justification for them, the approval criteria is the same, and that is set forth by ORS as well. The justification will be a little bit different depending on the project and depending on what, uh, the, I guess the scope of that work is. For Roosevelt, that was an alternative procurement. It was looking at, because it's an occupied site, we wanted to make sure that it wasn't just purely a low bid project. We wanted to see some qualifications of that general contractor that they understood safety, they understood phasing, they understood how to work around, uh, a site that is, uh, has students, uh, onsite. When we look at CMGC, it's, it can include that as well. We've done some large projects that have students onsite. Uh, but also it's really around the complexity and what that project is. When you have, uh, a historic structure, for example, we'll want to see some, uh, recent relative experience that the contractor knows how to deal with historic materials, uh, how to do pre-construction services. Uh, and then it's just the overall complexity and size, especially when you do a modernization. Uh, our modernization projects, our fences and our madisons are very, very large. You do not see that type of renovation work, hard bid, low bid at all. It is all some level of alternative procurement. So, uh, in, in, so that's, you know, kind of a, a high level. We can look at every individual one and we can look at the approval criteria and the findings because those all are created and all, all those do all go to the board before we procure them. So I don't know that fully answers your question. And we have Marina and Emily here as well. If there's anything that they want to add to that problem.
I, I want to ask, I, I want to, I want to dial down. So I've been out of construction area for a long time. And so with these alternative procurements, is, is there some shift of, um, response to, the owner takes more responsibility than the, than the general contractor does in one method or the other. And the other thing is I think everybody knows, you know, I would love to see our MWESB, I'd like to see, you know, with this bond, an opportunity to create wealth building opportunities for people who've been shut out of the economy. And, um, this bond could potentially provide, you know, jobs for, for people that have a harder time getting in, um, on public projects in Portland. Um, and so I'm curious if these alternative procurements, the RFP and the CMGC are, do, do they, are, do they provide um, fewer barriers for people to participate? Or do they make it more difficult because of insurance requirements? Size of projects, the way projects are chunked up, you know, um, I'm just curious about all that. I'm, I'd like to envision a world where we have, you know, a forty percent minority contractor, um, participation rate. That's in my mind, that's when we know we're successful. And so I'm just curious about the, the ways in which we procure, what, to what extent do those invite people in versus keep people out? You know, as a public agency and stewards of public funds, I'm, it's a big concern of mine. You know, it has been for a very long time, thirty years or more.
Yeah, that is.
Since I was seven.
That is a great question. What the alternative procurement was, so alternative procurement is alternative to traditional low bid. Low bid is, is purely objective. It is taking the lowest responsive responsible contractors, basically taking the lowest dollar amount. Uh, well, alternative procurements, whether it be via RFP, which was done on Roosevelt and also in our CMGCs, allows us to create our own criteria, including our objectives, even in, in examples, our objectives around certified business. So we evaluate the contractors on the criteria that we set, including their certified business plan. And then we require them to submit a plan with their proposal and then they're evaluated on that. And so that, that's just one example. Safety is another one that we often look at when we're looking on these large, complex projects. So the alternative procurements are what allows us to inject some of our, uh, our goals into the project, into that procurement process that wouldn't be there.
So Dan, I'm going to play devil's advocate if I can. I'm sorry, Emily. Do you have something you wanted to add? Go ahead.
I was just going to add that we consistently hear from our Equity and Contracting Advisory Committee and other minority and small contracting partners that, um, they don't love the low bid methodology. They feel that small, small businesses and minority businesses are at a disadvantage. Um, just because they can't compete at the same scale. Um, and they're, they do push for the, the best value, um, type felicitations. Now, of course, Oregon law requires the low bid method unless we get an exception. And there's some, a lot of work that goes into, uh, getting that exception. But that's, that's what we're hearing is that the RFP, the best value is where they want to see us go more often.
I appreciate that, Emily. And I think, um, I think the rub here is that it's not just an either or, um, question because, um, you know, back to your question, Michelle, about are there some barriers here to our certified businesses? And, um, Dan, back to your description that we set the qualifications. Um, when we have an alternative procurement process like an RFP, we set the qualifications and criteria, including, for example, relevant experience. And so a lot of times what that looks like, which many people in the community will tell you is a functional barrier for our certified businesses is that you are not considered qualified to bid on a particular job unless you've basically done the exact same job before. Which, you know, something of the exact same size or something that meets the same conditions that this particular job is being conducted under. Um, and that to me is, is counter to our stated values of having an interest in cultivating and nurturing smaller certified businesses. And so the, there are a lot of people in the community who will say that there, um, it's very difficult to grow a business under those conditions. So I'm wondering, you know, what are, what are we doing to both be sure that we're going to end up with, with contractors that, that indeed have the capability to perform the work well, even if they haven't quite done a job that size or a job under the similar conditions before, while at the same time nurturing the ability for some of these businesses to grow?
Yeah, good, good questions. I think there's two, I think I have two comments of that and I might invite Emily or Marina to jump in as well. One, I think when there's, uh, there's obviously lots of different types of contracting methods. And without having the data in front of me, I think I can still say pretty confidently, if you look at the contracting methods where staff has the more ability to influence the selection, you will see a higher number of certified firms on those type of procurements. Where we have less opportunity to influence the selection, low bid being kind of the standard for that, you will see lower percentages. So our ability to have criteria and use alternative procurements, I think by and large is a big benefit to our certified business goals. There, there's also minimum thresholds for our certain types of procurements. And this is where maybe Marina and Emily, uh, will have some more detail than me. I'm pretty sure our minimum requirements are pretty low. Uh, I don't, I don't think offhand, you know, if we're looking at a, at a high school project, it's going to say you have to have done a high school, you have to have done a high school this size. You know, we're looking for contractors who have experience in this type of work. But I think the minimum thresholds are generally pretty low. But I'll, I'll let me ask Emily or Marina if they have any more. Marina's raising her hand if I want.
Thank you, Dan. Um, I did want to weigh in because I think it's important to understand that, um, we have actually been really pushing on that experience requirement with our RFPs and with this one in particular. Um, the, the project team can attest that they initially started out looking for more general experience with high school construction. And what I really pushed them to do was to identify where there was unique components of the work that might really benefit from a, from a financial and schedule risk standpoint from a requirement for experience in that area. So for example, um, the push on this one was to change the experience requirement to specifically STEM and CTE.
You just muted yourself accidentally.
I, I realized, I think it got muted accidentally. Yes. So, um, it was important for us to have coordination of trades unique to STEM and CTE spaces. And that was the expertise that we looked for very specifically on this one. Um, there are also some things that are, um, related to bonding capacity for our construction contractors. So that if they do not have the, the capacity to take on projects this size, um, they will not be bonded to do so. And so we're not typically, um, setting really strict requirements on, um, project size. That, that comes from their fin- project size. That, that comes from their financial bonding capacity that really sets that limit. So just a couple of things I wanted to note, and I, I did really want to reiterate, we don't, we are definitely trying to open up our experience requirements to look more broadly at what experience they can bring and, and very specifically identify the types of things that they need to have experience in order to limit the risk to the district.
Yeah, thank you for that. I mean, nobody wants, you know, someone to come up first time, you know, and build a high school as their first project. But having been involved in these conversations since 1990, 91, and knowing that there are barriers to bonding and knowing that there's, you know, institutional racism and all kinds of other factors that go into making this a very difficult environment for communities, communities of color owned contractors to do the work. I'm just wondering, there's a family joke that we call how to write a RFP. And it's like, yeah, you'll get the job, but one of the requirements is that you must speak Dutch. Like, can you speak Dutch? Oh, you can't? Okay, well, I can. So I get, you know, I get the, I get the thing. So I think that staff has some agency over, you know, helping bring people along versus providing a barrier. Even, you know, even, even though we're publicly funded, we're public agency. But I would really like to see us do everything in our power, you know, under the Oregon revised statutes that govern procurement, to just being good stewards, to being, you know, caring community members that want to see, envision a world in which, you know, BIPOC construction companies can grow, is what I'd like us to aim for. I, I know that there's bonding and, you know, you don't want anybody practicing building a brick wall on, on your project. But, you know, to the extent that we can, I'd really like us to be as creative as possible, as, as welcoming as possible to, to meet some of these broader goals. Particularly because we've got these projects coming up on our agenda, actually, for, I believe for May, the Jefferson High School Modernization Center for Black Student Excellence, and starting the master planning process for IWB Wells in Cleveland. You know, we have projects coming up in which I think it'd be great to see our values reflected on the job sites. And I'll stop talking.
But, but to your point, Michelle, Dan and Marina, have we ever had any outside review of our, you know, how we're using our alternative procurement practices? Is this something that, I think we talked about having our, our bond external auditor maybe take a look at our certified business contracting and/or alternative procurement process? Is that happening? Or have we ever had any other outside source look at sort of our track record here and our way of doing business relative to best practices?
I'll say that our performance auders often look at procurement as part of their work plan. And even noted in the memo, one of the, the article made a reference to one of the processes. The memo highlights that this was actually a recommendation from our auditors. We changed through this process because that is what the recommendation is. And they continue to look at different practices that we have. And Marina, do you want to talk about for the work plan for this year, specifically what they're looking at?
Certainly. They are indeed looking at our business equity practices. They have been looking through many different aspects of those. And, you know, I just want to note that we are, of course, doing that internally as well. And I thought it might be useful if, if Emily is willing to talk a little bit about some of the things that we have been discussing for changing criteria on our RFPs for A and E and CMGC.
Sure, yes, we've been, and I will just reiterate, my team is working very carefully with the bond auditors, performance auditors. In fact, we just had an hour and a half meeting, another one today. So business equity is very much on their agenda, and we've been feeding them all kinds of information. We, so for the past few months, we've been working on getting together a revision of our RFP language, our evaluation language and criteria. We've been sort of continuously evolving that language since the equity and purchasing policy started back in 2012. And for instance, a few years ago, we started emphasizing bringing partners to the table so that those smaller GCs, for example, could get that kind of experience that they, that they could grow. And so there's points that can be awarded when you bring a certified firm to the table with you as a partner. But we are working on strengthening that language and intend to have new draft criteria and clearer scoring breakout for the equity, business equity criteria before our next big RFP for A and E or CMGC. And that's the collaborative process between me and Marina and Dan. And Marina's had some of her staff weigh in on this language. So we want to make it as strong as we possibly can, based on the feedback we have from our Equity and Contracting Committee, and looking at what some other local agencies like Metro have done with their language, trying to just get a little stronger.
Emily, I think you were talking to Rob about the language in your, specifically in your RFPs. But do you anticipate that we could make things easier or better by improving the language of our policy itself? Do we as a board have work to do there?
You know, that's a good question. And I, the policy is pretty broad. I, I don't know about that. And I, it's possible from what I heard from the bond auditors today on some of their initial thoughts, that they may have some suggestions there with regard to policy. They, I know that one thing we're hearing from both, both auditors and our community members is it's, it's not just the number you hit. It's not just that 18% or 16% or whatever. Because you could, you can potentially hit that number by just having one big minority owned firm partner on the project. But it's the number, it's also the number of firms who benefit and the number of small firms that you help grow by bringing to the project. And our policy really just focuses on that number, that percentage, right? And doesn't turn our emphasis towards how many firms are we really bringing on to projects? And they could be little tiny ones, but we're helping them grow by bringing them on. So, and we've talked about, Dan and Marina and Claire and I have a group that meets monthly to talk about this work. And we've talked about, in our reporting at least, more emphasizing the number of firms that are benefiting. Because you could have, you know, you can have 100 tiny firms on a CMGC, and maybe that only gets you to 2%, but you're also helping 100 firms. So we, so I don't know if that needs to, if the policy needs to change, but we want to you know, broaden our orientation a little bit and on what we see as success in the EPC policy.
I think that's great. I know of some examples of public partnerships that have been done on with a larger GC and a smaller GC. When we talk about growth, the Hotel Metro, Hotel is one of them. PCC Cascade Campus partnered, I think it was Welsh Construction and Pacific Mark grew Pacific Mark. So Pacific Mark is now capable of doing larger, you know, has the experience. And I'm also curious if there's ever been an economic impact analysis done. And that would be, you know, so right now we're looking at solely the percent, and that's one number. But what are those other numbers? What are the, what is the, with, what is our $1.2 billion that voters voted in for us in November? How does that translate in minority communities? You know, for each dollar spent, has that, how many jobs has that created? You know, have people been able to buy homes that were not, that were renters before? You know, so some of these like longer term impacts? I don't, I don't know who's, who would do that, but I, I think that that might be an important also metric to know whether we're being successful with any of these policies that we're talking about tonight. Where are the dollars going? Are the dollars benefiting communities of color?
I'm not aware that any such investigation has been done so far, but it.
It would be like a, you know, a, a third party consulting firm would probably take on that type of work. But we've already gone over, this is 13 minutes past time. I think this is a really important discussion. I really appreciate everyone's attention, and I'm keeping everyone from dinner or, or a glass of wine. And if there are any more comments or next steps that we need to discuss before we adjourn. Amy, are you done with questioning or? I appreciate your, your attention to these. These things are, topics are very important to me as well. Andrew, did you have anything? Anyone?
No, I appreciated the memo as well, just on that specific contract. And, and I took some time to pull together, but it was very helpful to walk through at a detailed level, given the article. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time tonight. This is good work and see you next time. The next time will be April 15th.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Exciting. Bond work taking shape.